Hi.
Good to see you. Happy New Year.
Yes, absolutely. So this will be my first time to participate.
Excellent. We're so delighted that you were able to join us today.
Me too. I'm glad that I'm here in California and I am glad to have my life back from the January 6th committee. And so it's all good.
You know what an unbelievably critical time we are in, and you were right at the heart of it. It's just really amazing. I'm sure you must think, sit back and think about that. It's just incredible.
Well, it is. And I think over time we'll have a better understanding of the impact, but we did our best. I think we got the truth out and we'll see what happens next.
That's it. A good way to approach it. We'll see what happens next. And I hope what happens next is that we convene on time.
Yeah. Hard to do.
She's on. Adams and yeah.
Good afternoon. We're gonna begin our one o'clock meeting for our 2023 legislative workshop. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Yes. Good afternoon. Let the record reflect all supervisors are present with supervisors who ask you and Adams appearing via video conference and supervisors LaHo Church and Lopez appearing in person.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask you if Supervisor Chris Lopez could lead us in the pledge of allegiance for today's meeting?
I'm drawing me the pledge. I pledge allegiance for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And now we'll ask for our announcement by our interpreter Diego Celis.
We wanted to ask at todos, mi nombre es Diego Celis, ser el intérprete de inglés y español, español inglés en esta reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Pago hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, Diego. Now, any additions or corrections by the clerk?
There are none.
Thank you very much. Everyone, we are very honored to once again hold our legislative workshop. I just want to let the public know that today we are expected to have a representative from Dan Feinstein's office, a representative, that's Zach Vaden. A representative from US Senator Alex Padilla's office, Margaret Arachiga. Congress member Jimmy Panetta will be joining us in person. Congress member Zoe Loughran will be joining us by Zoom. Senator Ana Caballero will be represented by Vanessa Gonzalez. Senator John LeRoux will be joining us by Zoom. Assemblymember Rivas will join us by Zoom, I believe, only for about the first half an hour. But I know Dominic is here representing him and Assemblymember Don Addis will be joining us by Zoom as well. And we do, we are privileged to also have a representative from the governor's office as well. So we want to thank you for your time for joining us for this important meeting. And I also want to acknowledge all the mayors and city managers that are joining us on Zoom as well as they have been invited invited to part to listen and participate in today's meeting. And certainly always want to thank the public. But to start us off, I want to go to our CAO Sonia De La Rosa to make some opening comments.
Good afternoon, Sonia De La Rosa. It is my privilege to introduce our county administrative staff that worked on the legislative team. And this is Nick Chulos, our Assistant CAO. Annette Diamo from Legislative Coordinator Ashley Walker, a state legislative advocate with NOSAMAN LLP in Sacramento. Brent Heberly, federal legislative advocate with Ballard and Spa Spar in Washington DC. And it is also my opportunity to provide an update in just a bit for the state of the county.
Thank you very much, Madam CAO. Everyone, the reason we have this workshop every year is to try to get on the same page with their state and federal legislators. The people in Monterey County do not have their own individual lobbyists, but their county government does on their behalf. And so we weigh in on a wide range of budgetary and legislative issues. There are thousands of bills that go through Sacramento and through Washington DC. So as we're beginning the new legislative session for 2023, we made it our tradition and our practice to have this kind of a meeting. And I think we're the only one of the few, if not the only county that does this with our state and federal representatives at the beginning of each year. So this is also an opportunity to hear from our legislators on their priorities for Monterey County this coming year, and also to discuss how we can work together in partnership. They support issues that are important to Monterey County, but also bills that they're working on. We like to also be reciprocal and provide them the support as one of their counties that they represent. Today, we're gonna go over, we're gonna go over some agenda items here. We're gonna cover current disaster review and the state of our county. Okay, I'll do it once more. Disaster review and state of the county and then presentations on county priorities. We're going to hear comments from our federal and state legislators. We're going to hear comments from all the boards, the supervisors at the end of the meeting, and we're going to have a roundtable discussion as well. We are very tight scheduled today, so we're going to ask all our presenters to be as brief as possible to allow some roundtable discussion at the end. So to begin, we're going to go to our state of the county and we'll pass it back to our CAO.
I'd like to thank all our county legislators for their continued advocacy of Monterey County's legislative priorities. I'd also like to thank our department heads and staff for their work behind the scenes to provide letters and input related to proposed legislation that would impact our residents and our businesses. Here's a quick recap of the work completed in the last year. We hired a director of homeless services and strengthened the county's communications function. We established a Department of Emergency Management, which was formerly the Office of Emergency Services run from from our county administrative office. Our board held three regional water forums and the next step will be to seek funding to continue those conversations through a facilitated process. Although our agricultural economy is strong, it was highly impacted by the winter storms. Businesses and employees will continue, will continue to need support as they recover. And we will start tomorrow. We've already started, but we're actually setting up a center tomorrow for the local assistance so that we have a one stop shop for individuals to seek services and assistance. Our tourism economy is recovering and our property tax revenues are up. With the infusion of state and federal funding and a sound budget management, the county budget is stable. However, we do have continued needs. We proactively address communities that were disparately impacted by COVID by funding community outreach health workers through the VIDA or Virus Integrated Distribution of Aid Program, collaborative vaccination efforts and a public information campaigns. Today, we continue to adapt to our new normal with COVID in our communities. Like other counties, housing affordability for our residents and workforce is challenging. We are focused on proactive community healthcare issues. The county hospital is doing well and supports regional safety net hospitals like Watsonville Community Hospital and the Me Memorial in King City. We are working on the Farmworker Resource Center and the South County just Family Justice Center. The Casterville Seawater Intrusion Project receiving an earmark for a well replacement. The expansion of broadband services will provide connectivity, healthcare and workforce. And also help continue to support our hybrid county workforce. Supporting a high level of public participation in our in our meetings will continue with this broadband in reinforcement and expansion. We are fortunate to have a board that is highly engaged in legislative policy. Our continued challenges include sustaining a workforce and improving recruitment and retention efforts. Water, water infrastructure and safety for our reservoirs. And management of seawater intrusion in the Salinas Valley, which may be achieved through expansion of the Casterville Seawater Improvement Project. Addressing our affordable housing challenges when we have limited areas that can be developed and a stronger collaborative relationship with our cities. Broadly, we seek legislation to support our ongoing challenges related to housing, including homelessness, water, including drinking water, land use, wildfire protection, prevention and protection and emergency response and recovery. And with your help, we will continue uplifting our families and our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much, CAO De La Rosa, for those comments. A lot is on our agenda for this year to get done. But Monterey County realizes that we don't do it alone. As supervisors, a lot of accomplishments that we get done is done in partnership with a lot of other local governments, a lot of other agencies, but especially our state and federal legislators that many times advocate for us to get money so that we carry out good ideas and good projects in our local community. We're going to go next, talking about recovery and the aftermath of these winter storms. We're going to go to a presentation by Tracy Molfino, Randy Ishi and Lou Baumann. But I wanted to first ask Dominic, if Assemblymember Rivas was online, if you would like to make some comments, because I know he's going to join us for a bit. And I want to accommodate him. Do you just give him that window of opportunity to make some words, opening remarks, because I know he has to drop off. Okay, let me know. So we want to make sure we accommodate him. So we'll go to Tracy Molfino. Thank you very much, Randy and Lou Baumann. Thank you for all your work. For everyone for the tremendous work done over these last few weeks on the storms.
Good afternoon, Charleao and other members of the board and legislative members. Just very briefly, I know the time is short, but we're going to cover the response to our winter storms and the recovery thereof. So it'll begin with with that update from the Department of Emergency Management move to the Randy Ishi from Public Works. And then Lou Baumann from the Water Resource Agency. So as you all know, it's been quite a busy 2023 and start thereof. The emergency actually began in December, right after Christmas, when a period of heavy rain started. And a state of emergency within the county was proclaimed. Then the rain started and did not stop for a good two weeks while into January. We encountered like everybody else in California from strong rain, strong winds flooding throughout the county. This flooding took place north to southeast to west in Monterey County. And infected, or I'm sorry, affected the entire watershed. The Department of Emergency Management activated its emergency operations center. We co-located with the city of Salinas here in our emergency operations center. Most cities in Monterey County activated their emergency operation centers and declared a state of emergency as well. And many departments within the county established their department operations centers. So it was quite a couple, three weeks for everybody in Monterey County. All of our watersheds in the county were affected from the Salinas River, Carmel River, Paro, Arale, Seca and Big Sur. We had a risk of levee system failure and Paro localized floodings flooding all over Monterey County with our creeks and drainage systems. The three burn scars, actually four burn scars in Monterey County now all had risks of landslides and debris slides. And as you'll hear from Randy Ishi, the public infrastructure and roadways were severely compromised. But for the excellent work of our public work staff and our first responders, we were able to keep the most of the roads open. And some sadly did suffer some substantial damage. Again, on December 27th, the county declared a state of emergency. The state of California declared a state of emergency for these winter storms on January 4th. And on January 8th, the governor requested to present presidential emergency declaration, which was granted on January 9th. And on the 19th, Monterey County was added to that declaration, which included a major disaster declaration. Our initial countywide estimates, damage estimates are well over $120 million. This includes an initial response and emergency repairs. Damage, long-term damage to the agricultural industry, especially in the Salinas Valley. And then damage throughout Monterey County to the cities and special districts that make up Monterey County. So a pretty substantial loss has incurred. So currently we are under a declaration for FEMA categories A and B and individual assistance. These are temporary repairs, emergency repairs that must be completed within six months. Include debris removal and emergency protective measures. We're currently working with FEMA to determine if they will approve permanent work, permanent repairs, which are severely needed in our roads, bridges, water control facilities, public utilities and other public infrastructure. So before I turn it over to Randy, I'll just say a word about the amazing people in Monterey County and the resilience. Not just of our public safety partners and the county employees, but to the residents of Monterey County. Top to bottom, they have taken part in their response and recovery, and we continue to see amazing people at work here in Monterey County. So I will turn it over to Randy to speak about Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you very much and good afternoon, Chair, members of the board and our state and federal electeds. Again, we thank you very much for the time you've taken with us today to hear, hear us today. As underscored by our interim emergency services manager, Tracy Molfino, this was not a small isolated event. This series of atmospheric rivers, river flooding and other associated issues affected the entire county. This was a county-wide event from north to south. In preparation of that series of events, our public works staff did hire emergency contractors to supplement our existing workforce. And we also hired emergency contractors to assist us with repairs, debris removal, emergency preventative measures, in addition to the road crews. Normal course of activities during a storm event. And generally, our course of action was to make roads passable for the local traffic and for emergency responders. And then clear out debris and make it more open so that way it's is returned back to general use service. Unfortunately, these series of storms did cause disruptions to our local population who tried to get to work every day. It also caused disruptions to our ability to deliver product and market for our ag industry and others. And just altogether caused significant both public property damage and private property damage here in the county. The next two slides help show how dramatic it was. So the first slide and now the second slide show you. At one of the atmospheric river events, how many roads were impacted to the public transportation infrastructure? With the red exclamation points representing the road closures. And now we see at the next event that occurred on nine January 23. We had even more roads that were closed because of the severity of that winter event. And so we move on to our next slide and we show you some of the damages which we had to deal with, both as our road crews and our contractors to restore things for our public. We had lots and lots of category A debris removal activity. That's pretty typical out of any winter storm event, but this one was far dramatic. This picture shows you one of our roads just downhill of one of the burn scar areas, the river fire burn scar area. And shows Pine Canyon Road, Live Oak Way. We needed to bring out excavator to clear out our drainage channel that had been clogged with sediment that came down from the hill. Granted, the fire was now a few years ago, so the soils and the vegetation started to heal themselves. But we're still getting these levels of debris flow, particularly from this set of winter storms. And then we, as we went to the next slide, it shows you another exemplary example of further burn scar area. Debris flow that occurred completely disrupting this corridor of agricultural traffic and local traffic that tried to get to and from their end destinations. This is an area that has slid before. It took many series of friend and loaders and dozens of trucks to haul away the material. And after these pictures were taken, that slight area came down once again and we had to clear it out once more. Again, they're completely affecting any traffic that wanted to use those routes. So as we went to the next slide, this shows you another exemplary example of now permanent damages we had. In the first series of the storms, we just had debris removal and emergency preventative measures. Such as bypass pumping that we tried to do and employed. But then after this latest series, we experienced permanent damages. And so this shows you this location on Carmel Point known as Scenic Road. And on the southerly portion there by the bottom of the hill where you see the houses on the left-hand side of the screen. Where the location map is showing you. A high combination of highway of action occurred as well as a series of further winter storms. Which precipitated upon the slope. And now this road is now closed to public access. To cars, to bicycles and to pedestrians. And in fact, the sewer line. And sewer services is interrupted because of this severe set of permanent damages that we've encouraged, incurred because of the wave action and the storms. This is an area where we really need help from our state and federal sources. And as we move on to another set of permanent damages that we incurred, which require permanent repairs, this is Gonzalez River Road. The bridge that you see on the left-hand side was taken around the time when the Salinas River began to rise to flood level stages. Coming from the south from San Ardo and working its way north to the Pacific Ocean as it went through the, through and nearby the community Gonzalez. This bridge, which back in 95 also experienced flood damages. Once again became inundated there on its westerly side. Leaving behind a significant scar in our transportation network. And so you see on the right-hand side. That was taken a day after the waters receded and that entire travel lane fell. Feet down into the Salinas River where once it used to be a continuous. Road to the bridge approach to get across the bridge. To this day. This road, which is one of the few that'll get you across the Salinas River to Gonzalez, serving many a traveler. Is still unusable to our public and is at this point in time closed to all forms of traffic until we can find a way to permanently repair this. Similar to the scenic road that you saw in the previous example, which we're trying to find engineering solutions for. And as we move on to the next slide. This shows you our wastewater treatment plant that Public Works operates for the community of Chular, which is just north of Gonzalez. On the left-hand side, it shows you the approximate location of the wastewater treatment plant. They're nestled among Chular River Road and River Roads next to the Salinas River. And when the floodwaters rose on the Salinas River, they inundated not only the area around the river. Kind of like Gonzales River Road, but also it overtopped and flooded our wastewater treatment plant that we operate for the community. The floodwaters are still receding, so we have not had opportunity yet to do damage assessments. To determine the severity of damage that's been left behind by these floodwaters. So again, this is another location where we look to our state federal partners for assistance on it. Before I hand the floor over to our interim general manager of Water Resources Agency, we would just like to remind the public to please be patient with us. That we appreciate their patience they had with us before. We need their continued patience as we continue to reopen the roads, clear debris. And continue our damage assessments of all the damages that have been left behind by these storms. The solutions are not readily available and apparent. We need experts to help us in many cases. And so this will take the course of much time before we can find permanent solutions for many of these instances. And with that, I hand the floor over to our interim general manager, Lou Baumann.
Thank you, Randy. And honorable supervisors, legislators, thank you for joining us this afternoon. To hear an overview of our damages as well as our legislative requests. What is unique about this storm is that we are receiving inflows not only from the Salinas River watershed that extends over 4,000 miles, but from the Paro River watershed. Extending over 1,200 miles and covering over four counties. And what was unusual as well is that there were no releases from our reservoirs, so that these were all natural flows. From a storm event and I think from Randy's slides, you can see the magnitude of damage that our county experienced. Water Resources has facilities throughout the county and into San Luis Obispo. As you can see, there was damage to our facilities at many of these locations. With significant damages along the Paro levee, at the Salinas River mouth. As well as at our reservoirs. And recognizing time is short, I'll give you a brief summary of damage assessments. We can move to the next slide. First and foremost was debris clearance. You may have seen on the news the tremendous debris that came into Nocimento Reservoir. And some into San Antonio as well. At our Salinas River Lagoon. A combination of flows and high waves destroyed our levee road, lagoon gates, our slide gate. And associated erosion and debris. And that's estimated preliminarily at about $700,000. Next slide, please. The protective measures was staff time and my hat goes off not only to our first responders, our Public Works crews. But our Water Resources Agency staff who worked literally 24 hours a day in the field. Estimating inflows to our reservoirs and evaluating our pump stations and our flood control facilities. That staff time is estimated at three quarters of a million dollars. We easily used 1.5 million dollars of flood fighting materials. And as I mentioned, we had such tremendous forces in the reservoirs. We had many docks floating and we even had a sunken houseboat. Next slide, please. Like Public Works, our road systems in and around our reservoirs primarily experienced damage. We also experienced damage at the Moss Landing Road culverts and the associated tide gates. As well as access roads to our Paro levee. Next slide, please. Damage to our water control facilities, many of our pump stations, our flood walls, our erosion control facilities. And slope stabilization was a significant estimated cost, totally about 2.3 million dollars. Next slide, please. Continuing with our water control facilities, one of our primary concerns. Was during the event and continues to be is the Paro levee. That is a extremely old facility. And over the years, the height of the levee on the Monterey County side is about 1.8 feet lower than it is on the Santa Cruz side. So there was significant concern that flows would move into our county and affect the community of Paro and the adjacent farmland. We estimate damages and restorations to be on the order of three to four million dollars in the upper reaches of the river. As well as log boom damage due to debris flow in Nocimento Reservoir. And miscellaneous damage to our slews, our berms and our slide gates, totally about 6.875 million. And finally, associated building and equipment to respond to this as well as our alert storm monitoring gauge system, which provides critical infrastructure prior and during storm events. And our final slide summarizes our estimated damages together. And again, these are preliminary estimates, but the total will exceed about 16 million dollars. We will be working with our teams with OES and FEMA to refine these costs in the weeks ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Mr. Baumann, all the, all the presenters. I did want to just remind the community that we're hoping to do a tour here in Monterey County. I know that recently the governor visited Capitola. The president was in Watsonville and Capitola again yesterday. I think Senator Laird and Assemblywoman Don Addis are doing a visit on the peninsula. But we, we know that there's a need in the Salinas Valley, not only to focus on the disadvantaged communities that were hurt, the, the damaged infrastructure such as the Gonzalez Bridge. But most importantly as well, the, the impact on our nation's food supply, that this severe damage to agriculture. That's not only lost crops, but it's jobs that may be delayed, well, lost jobs and, and harvest that may be delayed because of the flooding that happened on so many, so much acreage in Monterey County. So we're hoping we could get that set up for late next week. We're going to go on to our next set of presenters. I did want to just ask Dominic if Assembly Member Rivas is on. We're going to go to Assembly Member Robert Rivas. Because he has limited time with us and we want to thank him for his support and leadership, but also commend him on his soon to be new role as Assembly Speaker later this year. So we'll give you a few minutes. We'll take you out of order, Assembly Member Rivas, to give some of your opening comments here before we move on to our presenters.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and thanks for allowing us to move up in the order. I'm, I'm, you know. Unfortunately, away from home, I'm in my other home away from home, which is in Los Angeles. And so, but, 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 you know, always great to, to have the opportunity to engage with, with, you know, a staff, with elected officials from the county of Monterey and with my colleagues. You know, the state level and then obviously members of, you know, our congressional, our delegation, but really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this important discussion. And, you know, I think that, you know, first, you know, as I hopped on the call and, you know, we got the briefings from, 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 from county staff about the recent flooding events and these incredible storms. You know, I want to thank the county. I want to thank county staff. The Public Works, Emergency Response, all of the volunteers for all the work and effort when it came to the preparation and response to our recent storms. You know, our office working with our state legislative delegation with Assemblywoman Addis, Senator Laird. We have Gail Palarin, Ana Caballero, and then obviously working with Jimmy Panetta and Zoe Lofgren, you know, we continue to monitor the storm impacts and, and all of the damage. And, and certainly we're going to work together to continue to ensure that we're disseminating information in real time on available resources as we receive that information. You know, as, as, as we all know, Monterey County, the central coast was one of the hardest hit regions in our entire state. And, you know, we're certainly going to do everything we can to get the county and to get our impacted, our communities back on this road to some recovery. You know, I, I think it was recently highlighted by the LA Times that, that statewide flood, some protection efforts. That, you know, it's been underfunded for years. And so moving forward, flood prevention must be a top statewide a priority. You know, obviously the science shows that these future mega floods are a real, real problem. They are going to be much bigger, more destructive. And, you know, it's going to threaten millions of statewide residents across California. It's a threat to our critical infrastructure. It's a threat to, to us, our state agriculture and certainly incredibly important to our region. But obviously recovery from these recent storms is, as was just mentioned by staff, is going to take time. But in addition to recovery efforts, we must be very, very intentional regarding important and critical. Some community resiliency efforts, you know, ensuring that we make major, major investments in flood protection moving forward. And, and so, but with that, you know, as I begin my third term here in the assembly. Now I'm obviously very thankful and proud of the strong work that Monterey County does and the work that we have done over the years. Together, you know, I'm, I'm proud to say that, that program's launched in the county of Monterey, such as the Regional Farmworker Housing Study, the Salinas and Praho Valleys. All the, all of the COVID-19 response efforts. You know, that work, it has led to broader equitable state policy. And I commend all of the work at the local, the staff level there in the county. I want to give a quick acknowledgement to Supervisor Chris Lopez, who I partnered with to ensure that the county of Monterey was included as a pilot county. In what was, I believe it was Assembly Bill 941, which is authored by Steve Bennett from the Santa Barbara area, Ventura area. It was a bill in the previous legislative session and it, it, it was work that recently resulted in a grant award of around 800,000 for the county of Monterey. To build a farmworker resource center in the southern part of Monterey County in the city of Goodenfield. Which is a significant victory for our farmworking families in South County. And, and so, you know, certainly appreciate Chris Lopez taking the lead in, in, in all the work that he has done and the county have done to make that possible. But, you know, certainly moving forward, we have a lot more work to do. This is a year where, you know, we're going at, you know, as a state, we can face some fiscal challenges. You know, certainly we have been very prudent in stocking state dollars in our reserves. And so certainly I, you know, I think we have, we don't know what to expect moving forward for the May revise, but certainly we know that it's going to be an unprecedented year. Unlike our previous years where we've been afresh with cash as a state. You know, but, but certainly when you look at these recent storms, one of the, you know, one area where, you know, I'm going to continue to focus on and do work is when it comes to our drought conditions. We know that all the water we have, you know, received still hasn't, you know, done much to alleviate the significant drought that we currently are in. Last summer, I wrote an op-ed for Ag Alert advocating for more water projects along the central coast and throughout the state. You know, certainly I've been working with Chairman Alejo, with Supervisor Lopez and county staff when it comes to advocating for improvements and also Senator Laird. When it comes to needed improvements at Lake Nocimento in San Antonio. That is, you know, those infrastructure projects are critical to the county, critical to our region and certainly look to en- ensure that we continue that advocacy to secure support for the county. Our office is also working to see, you know, to, to, to see how we can streamline regulations and slow down fuel removal operations. You know, these efforts are absolutely critical to mitigating and preventing wildfires as well as flooding. And, and so, you know, certainly as a state, we continue to support our cities and counties when it comes to housing and homelessness. It's been something that's always been a priority for me, for, for our office, for our region, certainly looking to address our housing needs as, as as they impact our county, focusing on workforce housing for our hospitality workers, our farm workers. And certainly doing all we can to, you know, address and support all of the work that's being done at the county level to address homelessness and, you know, all of our local governments. And, you know, certainly, you know, working in the agriculture space, I look forward to sharing agriculture until I, I will be sworn in as, as the 71st speaker here in the state assembly on June 30th. But, but with that, we, I look forward to ensuring that we continue to work with the Groshiper Association to really ensure that we're tackling the challenges. Facing the county, facing our agricultural industry locally around this INSV, INSV issue and problem. They're working with Supervisor Lopez on that as well. With Jimmy Panetta and with Zoe Lofgren. But, you know, certainly. But, you know, certainly, this is, you know, a year of transition for our office, but certainly look forward to working with our, my newest colleague, Ms. Addis. And anything we can do for this, for the county of Monterey, we, we look forward to working together in addressing any challenges and really looking to champion those issues most important to the county of Monterey. And so with that, appreciate the time and look forward to seeing everybody soon.
Thank you, Assemblymember Rivas. Congratulations on your soon to be new role. But I want to thank you for all your support and partnership on a wide range of issues for Monterey County and your staff. Dominic and the rest of the crew are doing a good job staying attentive to our requests and our needs here. We're going to go to our, our different presentations. These are going to be brief from different department heads. Each presenter will then introduce the next speaker and we will start with Jack Murphy, the Interim Military and Veterans Affairs Office, who will be speaking about the Monterey County Veterans Home Proposal.
I'm unsure if I can get the mic on here, but good afternoon, Chair Leho, Supervisors, Members of the Legislative Team. Monterey County now for the second year continues to seek a state legislative proposal for the development of a veterans home here in Monterey County. Preferably on or near the former Fort Ord. Establishing a veterans home in Monterey County will increase the access to long-term healthcare and housing for California's one point six million veterans. A veterans home here on the California Central Coast will also significantly reduce wait times, which are currently between one and five years. A home here on the Central Coast will offer proximity to existing VA healthcare and veteran services and facilities, and also provide housing for our homeless veterans. In addition to benefiting elderly, homeless and disabled veterans and their families. A Central Coast Veterans Home would provide a notable source of employment and income for those in the healthcare and hospitality fields. The county additionally seeks support for a sixty-five percent federal reimbursement for construction costs and an ongoing per diem for operations. Next slide. Since our last legislative workshop, our office has received letters of support from the city of Marina and Kings County Supervisors. Now totaling thirty-nine letters from various local, state and federal stakeholders. The county held a well-attended press rally on November ninth to highlight the need and the current support for a veterans home. Over the last few months, our office has also met with Senator Archuleta, Representative from Senator Laird's office, Representative Panetta, and most recently with Assemblymember Addis, who was just recently appointed to the Assembly Committee on Military and Veterans Affairs. This is all to build support and consensus for Monterey County's proposal. Next slide. Despite what we see as a clear need, unfortunately, the California Department of Veterans Affairs remains firm in its position that it will not support any proposal regarding construction of a new veterans home prior to a statewide assessment using criteria from their existing master plan. The current, there currently is not an assessment or study planned, which may offer a opportunity for legislative action. So thank you for your continued support and subject to your questions or comments, I'll be followed by Roxanne Wilson, Director of Homeless Services.
Thank you, Jack. We'll go to Roxanne.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, and again, thank you for this opportunity to present this policy priority from the Homeless Services Unit of the County of Monterey. In two thousand and seventeen, our point in time count peaked at two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven individuals experiencing homelessness on the night of, on that night in January. This was the highest point in time count in our history. Our community did not take this lightly. Monterey County has been working diligently in partnership with, in partnership with the Continuum of Care and our ESG recipient to rebuild our entire homelessness response system. We released our Lead Me Home five-year plan to reduce homelessness, overhaul coordinated entry and increased services and, and more in a more coordinated and intentional manner. In two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-two, we experienced decreases in our point in time numbers, which totaled twenty-eight percent. While we celebrate this, it must be noted that we are now experiencing a reduction of funding. For example, in round three of the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, Monterey County received three million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. And our continuum of care received four million, forty-seven thousand, fifty-four dollars. For round four, Monterey County received two million, five hundred fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And our COC received three million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Collectively, our community took a one point seven million dollar or twenty-three percent loss in funding in one year for doing exactly what we were supposed to do with that funding, which is to reduce homelessness. Current funding formulas inadvertently penalize communities for reducing homelessness and incentivize communities for increasing homelessness. Next slide, please. Other issues with utilizing the point in time and homelessness funding formulas is that there are far too that the numbers are far too low and unreliable to be used as the sole basis for understanding a region's homeless services needs. Our community's homeless management information system tells us that we served often more than double the amount of individuals in one year. Communities are also permitted to utilize different methodologies for reporting pit numbers to HUD. During the pandemic, HUD permitted some communities to use their coordinated entry master list, which is a very different methodology than communities like ours that did blitz counts. So we're not, we're oftentimes not comparing apples to apples when, when looking at point in time counts. By design, pit counts also only capture people who are experiencing homelessness as described in category one of HUD's definition, yet people in categories two through four, all access services. In conclusion, it is our request that other factors be considered in determining homelessness funding allocations like the cost of living, housing stock, how many people our homelessness response network is currently serving? And how many people are in line for help, among others? Thank you. I would also like to now pass it to Lou Baumann.
Thank you and good afternoon again. I'm going to present two projects this afternoon, the Nocimento and San Antonio Dam Safety Project. And following that, our inner lake tunnel and San Antonio spillway project. I believe most of you are familiar with our Nocimento and San Antonio reservoirs and may have had the pleasure to visit those facilities as well. Together, those reservoirs provide supply water to our fertile Salinas Valley for multiple benefit beneficial uses. They were built in nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen sixty-seven. And they are critical to our water supply infrastructure. They also provide recreational opportunities for our community through our County Parks Department. The water released from these reservoirs flows down the natural Salinas River channel for about a hundred miles to the ocean. And in that process, water percolates into the groundwater basin and is used beneficially by our agricultural community in our cities for water supply and irrigation. Together, these reservoirs support over two hundred thousand residents, including disadvantaged communities and over four hundred thousand acres of irrigated farmland. And as you know, this supports our twelve billion dollar agricultural industry. As most of you know, unlike other jurisdictions, we do not receive imported water through any of the state or federal water projects. So we are basically on our own, so to speak. What rains fall occurs in the county, we store and use for beneficial uses and the reservoirs are critical to that function. Due to the age of these facilities, they're in dire need of repair. Failing infrastructure is not a local issue, it's a national phenomenon. The American Society of Civil Engineers in their infrastructure report card, they analyzed over ninety-one thousand dams across the country and concluded that they would get a grade of D. So we are not alone and clearly the need is paramount to protect, maintain, enhance and renew our existing infrastructure. At Nocimento, the condition of the spillway and the plunge pool limit the ability of, of releases from our high-level outlets. San Antonio is under a self-imposed risk reduction measure, limiting amount of water that can be stored as a result of the California Department of Safety and Dams' recent mandate to replace rather than repair that dam spillway. The proposed project will replace the San Antonio spillway. It will make improvements to the Nocimento Dam and plunge pool as well as a variety of repairs and upgrades to both reservoirs in an estimated cost of a hundred and sixty million. Monterey County Water Resources is the lead agency for this project. We're very grateful. We've received six million in last year's state budget to initiate this project. And while we're most appreciative of that investment, a large financial obligation remains to complete this project. So once again, our ask is a hundred and sixty million to complete this project. Next slide, please. What's unique, and in the graphic you can see, Nocimento and San Luis Obispo County, it's, it's the dinosaur-shaped reservoir, if you will, and above that is San Antonio. In the Nocimento River Shed, it receives significantly more rain than in the San Antonio River Shed. And staff have observed that the reservoir fills about three times faster in Nocimento than San Antonio. And the result is that the, the agency is forced to release these waters, which increases the risk of flooding downstream. And more importantly, it releases, it releases significant water supplies that could be used beneficially through the river and into the Monterey Bay. The proposed project will connect the two reservoirs. And then you can see in the diagram, the black line, the conceptual tunnel alignment. It is a twelve-hundred-foot, ten-foot diameter pipe. It will flow by gravity. And as the faster flows come into the Nocimento reservoir, they will drain by gravity into the, the San Antonio reservoir, which has significant excess capacity. And will allow us to store those precious waters. As part of the project, the spillway at the San Antonio reservoir will also be raised. And it will increase the effective capacity of that reservoir by about forty-one thousand acre feet. Obviously, the project provides multiple benefits of flood control, capacity, water storage and recreational enhancement. So in summary, the proposed project is a multi-benefit project that benefits the Salinas River Basin. It minimizes flood control releases through the Nocimento Dam spillway. It increases the overall surface water supply. It improves the hydrologic balance of the Saline Water, Salinas Groundwater Valley, excuse me, basin. It continues to meet downstream environmental flow requirements for the South Central California coast steelhead and endangered species. It maximizes the effectiveness of our hydroelectric facilities at Nocimento. And as I mentioned, it preserves recreational opportunities in our reservoirs. And it protects agricultural viability and prime agricultural land. Our request for this project is a hundred and eighty million dollars. We're very grateful. We have received grants from the Department of Water Resources in the amount of ten million that has allowed us to begin design and issue an environmental impact report, which has just been released today. And we've also received a, a conditional grant from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for a fish screen. However, that is tied to completion and implementation of instruction. So again, thank you for your time and I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Randy Ishi.
Thank you very much and good afternoon. Once again, staff will be presenting to you three needs and then hand it over to the next department. So the first need is for the community of San Lucas in the South County. This is a need that we have brought to your collective before, as staff. San Lucas is a small, severely disadvantaged farming community. Approximately eight miles south of the city of King or King City. It consists predominantly of Hispanic farmworker families. And the water system is on the smaller side where it has about a hundred connections owned and operated by the San Lucas Water District. These individuals suffer from water insecurity and they have for a very long time. Hence why we bring this need back to you. They've had water quality problems that have occurred since circa two thousand and six. And in two thousand and eleven, the do not drink order was issued. In fact, to compound things, and as we have mentioned in the past, these individuals have been on bottled water orders for eight of the past ten years. Now, what's notable is that there is a offending party who has been identified and has been trying to work through the regulatory process. And as an update, though these matters typically go through our health departments, Environmental Health Bureau, the update is that the Division of Drinking Water has taken over as perimacy, meaning they're the lead permitting agency in working with this identified party. However, that would address only the water quality issue and it is our understanding that not only is there a water quality issue, there is also a turbidity issue in the water. So in spite of the wells being treated or some, some type of engineered fashion, which will occur with the existing water system, they will still have this other water quality issue to contend with. Thus, the request is to continue down a path of identifying funding in the order of approximately fifteen million dollars for the design, the environmental assessment, engineering, construction management and construction work for a new drinking water pipeline that connects back to the King City water system, where it is a known drinkable water source. This would provide a clean, long-term, reliable source of drinking water to meet this community's current and future needs. This community is a designated rural center in the county's general plan. And because of these water issues, they're also impacted on their ability to create affordable housing in the community of San Lucas. So housing needs are tied to this drinking water issue of which they have suffered from for a very long time. We'll move on now to our next need, which is the old Monterey County Jail. We have brought this to your collective in the past as well. This is a creative reuse project and I, I won't read over all the bullet points that you see on the PowerPoint or in the fact sheet, but it has a lot of history to it. Cesar Chavez, the co-founder of the United Farm Workers, was held in this jail, incarcerated there for twenty days. So it's listed in the U.S. National Registry of Historic Places, which reflects its architectural significance as well as a location where Cesar Chavez was imprisoned in his fight for farmworker rights. And we have some creative reuse ideas and options for this facility. A primary one of which is to retain the administrative building portion of this old Monterey County Jail. Thus, this would retain a significant piece of this historic resource that fronts Alisal Street. And that, that of which could be used as a museum dedicated to the labor movement. And the area behind administrative building could be a new memorial park dedicated to Cesar Chavez or civic rallies and other uses. And it's located on the west end of the promenade leading to historic downtown Salinas. The ask here to reflect the these costs is roughly on the order of magnitude of seventeen point two five million dollars for this particular ask. And moving on to the next slide. This is a new project that we're bringing to your collective and one that will be very important to the community of Salinas as well as other areas. So this request is for funding for a bike and skate park here in the city of Salinas on county lands. The scope is to construct a regional bike and skate park that serves Monterey, San Manito and Santa Cruz Counties. And the pro site is in a good location where it can provide a linkage to several multi-use trails that connect this project to other trails that lead to other parts of the communities and within the city of Salinas. Hence, it will provide more connectivity and pedestrian and multimodal uses for those who can access this facility and thus further promote healthy walkability, community, walkability in these communities. The bike track portion consists of approximately twelve thousand, here to square feet, where it would serve as a BMX pump track. And then the skate park portion is the balance of approximately nine thousand, five hundred square feet plus or minus. And what's also notable is that through the advocacy and championship of Chair Leho, as well as support supervisors, this was carried forward through the last Prop sixty-eight park grant funding processes. And it scored relatively well. It made it to the point where we had parties from the state scoring agency come to view the site, to talk about it further. We were very close on this project as the county. But unfortunately, because of the oversubscribed nature of those Prop sixty-eight funds, we unfortunately did not get the, get to the final running and funding for this project. But it'd be very important for our community. It would provide that various set of recreational features. various set of recreational features, and we have important partners for this project, which include the city of Salinas, the Salinas Regional Soccer Complex, as well as the Monterey County Blue Zones Project, all groups of which help promote walkability and healthy uh communities. We ask here is a little bit north of three million dollars in order to accomplish and create this facility for our community. And with that, I will hand it over to our next speaker, who is our Director of Health Services, Elsa Jimenez.
Thank you, Randy. Good afternoon. The county of Monterey Health Department Clinic Services Bureau began as a three clinic network in the central coast in the early nineteen nineties. In nineteen ninety four, our clinics were designated as federally qualified health center look alikes. And in two thousand nineteen, they received their full FQHC designation. We currently operate ten clinics in the cities of Salinas, Seaside, and Marina, and serve over forty five thousand uh Medi-Cal and uninsured patients per year. We have been operating the Marina Health Clinic since nineteen ninety five. It is the only full time safety net clinic in this city. The clinic is about eighteen hundred square feet with only four exam rooms and staffed by two providers and seven support staff. This clinic serves approximately twenty six hundred patients every year or thirty percent of eligible residents leaving over six thousand low income residents without access to primary care in their community. To better meet the needs of our Medi-Cal and uninsured residents in the city of Marina, the county needs to build a new safety net clinic to deliver much needed expanded general family practice, obstetrics and gynecology, and mental health integration services, and add dental services to meet the needs of both our Medi-Cal and uninsured residents as well as our veteran residents who currently have limited or no access to dental services in our county. There is an opportunity to construct a new bill to suit fourteen thousand square foot health center at a nearby vacant lot in the city of Marina, which would deliver comprehensive primary care and dental services to approximately ten thousand patients, resulting in an almost seventy five percent capacity increase. In summary, we are six seeking fourteen million dollars to construct a new fourteen thousand square foot health center that will increase access to critical health services for our low income and veteran residents. Thank you, and next I will hand it off to Brent Heberly from Ballard's Bar.
Thank you, Elsa. Hi, I'm Brent Heberly with Ballard's Bar, uh the county's federal advocate in Washington, D C. Um the county's asked me to highlight two of our federal issues uh today for you. And these are these are purely federal policy issues that we've decided to highlight. One is immigration reform. Uh and the other is the reauthorization of the farm bill, which is due up this year. So I know that both of these issues are very well known to Congresswoman Lofgren and Congressman Panetta. They've they've been extremely active um in both, but um we want to emphasize the importance of both of these um bills uh or policies uh for you today. Certainly with immigration reform, uh the county has taken a very active role uh over uh many years um on a a large number of immigration issues from DACA to TPS and others. Um but because of uh the impacts on agriculture, uh we are especially focused on the Farm Workforce Modernization Act, which is a bill that um Congresswoman Lofgren authored and and Congressman Panetta uh has cosponsored for for the last several years. We view this as a an extremely important piece of legislation uh for the agricultural industry in Monterey County, um which, you know, as the slide indicates, supports tens of thousands of jobs, um over twelve billion dollars to the local economy. And I I would also add, it's extremely important for the hospitality industry as well. So um we we're uh we're hopeful, um although we've been hopeful for for quite some time about comprehensive immigration reform getting done. Um short of that, um we we look forward to hearing um from our federal legislators on the prospects possibly for a a more slimmed down um agri- um immigration bill that might uh be focused on uh on the agricultural worker programs. And then with the farm bill, um I I'm not going to get into all the aspects of the farm bill as um Congressman Panetta uh on on the Ag Committee has been very focused on this and very helpful to the county um for wide variety of programs that are contained in the farm bill that are beneficial to our our local ag industry. Um we know that it's up for reauthorization at the end of this year. We look forward to hearing from from you uh today about the prospects of that getting done, given the the changes that have occurred this year in Congress. Um but obviously, you know, for for the local farmers, uh for the conservation programs, and for the rural development programs that all benefit the county, um we're certainly very supportive of of getting the farm bill reauthorized and and hope uh that there is um, you know, a good bipartisan effort that will be put forth to to make that happen. So with that, I will um yield back the rest of my time so we can we can move forward, and I will turn it over to um our next speaker, Tracy.
Good afternoon. Again, I just want to touch briefly on FEMA disaster assistance, cost recovery, and the timing challenges that have been um observed in Monterey County. And uh certainly expressed in this latest disaster and the need to uh to submit for reimbursement of funds. We are, as a county, still awaiting several million dollars from the two thousand seventeen uh fire winter storms as well as uh several million dollars from the twenty twenty wildfires. Uh these uh the funds and the lack to the lack of uh recouping them have delayed other road projects and other projects in Monterey County as we await those funds returning into the county from FEMA. So their practice and policy of delaying reimbursement is something that uh has created issues within county budget. Um additionally, uh and related to federal funding, the hazard mitigation performance grant program, which is a one to one match and funds uh emergency management uh staffing has not increased substantially over uh the last decade, and that has impacted our ability to hire additional staff using these funds to respond to a holistic approach to all emergencies from uh um response to recovery. So those are two areas that uh that uh we're asking to be addressed as well. And with that, I'll uh we'll turn it back.
Thank you very much, um Mr. Mulphino. Um we're not going to go to our legislators. First of all, this is we have a lot of other priorities, but with our limited time, we focus on the the top ones um to um convey to our state and federal legislators. But now this is that time to hear from from them on their twenty twenty three priorities, and I'm going to go with the person who is in the audience here. We'll start with Congress member Jimmy Panetta. Thank you for joining us in person.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Alejo, uh members of the Board of Supervisors staff. Appreciate this opportunity uh to say hello in person. It's actually kind of nice to be here. It feels like I haven't been in the chamber in a while. So thank you very much. Um obviously, I want to start off by thanking uh Monterey County for their organization and obviously the Office of Emergency Services for the good work that they did early on to um realize and appreciate the types of numbers and assessments that needed to be done in order to help FEMA and the state of California make the appropriate request for that disaster declaration. Um although uh Monterey County was not first out of the chute, you were second just a few days later getting that disaster declaration from the President of the United States. And that is because of the quick organization and the good work that you and your staff did uh to ensure that those numbers and those assessments were present and available in order to make that declaration. So congratulations and thank you very much. Um I also want to give credit to my staff, um starting off with Alejandra Cardenas. She was actually uh O E S. Once again, thanks to O E S, they allowed one of my staff members, Alejandra, to be there in the O E S building in their office just to coordinate, communicate, and collaborate in any way that we can uh on this. And if they needed any help, uh basically, that's why I wanted Alejandra there. So that was nice that O E S allowed that. Uh Susie Brusa, my district director, for reaching out to many of you in your offices uh to ensure that we had that coordination. And then, of course, Mark Denon, my legislative director back in uh Washington, D C, who was absolutely instrumental in um basically pushing uh all levels of government when it came to getting these necessary disaster declarations. A lot of that push had to do with many of the letters that we instantly got out the door to the administration to uh kind of let them know what the need was here in what I'll call Monterey County, but also the nineteenth congressional district. Um letters such as the one that I authored uh and wrote to the Department of Transportation, as well as the High Federal Highways Administration, basically saying they need to support Caltrans in their recovery efforts. Uh I think we got about thirty eight uh members of the California delegation to sign on to that and as well as both senators. Uh obviously, Representative Carbajal, our neighbor to the south here, um wrote a letter to President Biden talking about including San Luis Obispo in the disaster declaration, in the emergency disaster declaration. And then, of course, just yesterday, we presented a letter to Joe Biden uh signed by all four members of, I'll call it the San Jose delegation, myself, Zoe Lofgren, uh Rep S U and Rep Conna, uh in regards to making sure that Santa Clara gets that delegation. But I think the most important one was the one that I led on and authored and basically got every single member of the California delegation, including Speaker McCarthy and our two senators to basically uh uh let the president know, let the administration know how important it was to provide that disaster declaration to those counties to the that were impacted. And I think that obviously contributed to the quick turnaround uh that we had in regards to the disaster declaration for the counties that were able to provide those assessments right away, and they will continue to do it going forward. Um obviously, with that disaster declaration, especially that was granted here from Monterey County, uh FEMA is here, FEMA is on the ground, and I guess similar to the message that the president uh told the people in Santa Cruz yesterday, I will convey what he conveyed to me about FEMA being here in the nineteenth congressional district that FEMA is not going anywhere. Um I think I I just had a uh a good conversation with Mayor Keely before I came down here. And uh and Fred said something that I'm sure you, all of you, can relate to. He said, look, he said, I didn't need to be a part of the president's visit yesterday. Uh I don't I don't need the I don't need the cameras. I don't need that. But what I do need is my congress member to be here six months from now. So when FEMA is not working or we're having an issue with FEMA, we know we can go to you and basically provide that help. I completely get that. I think you understand that, and you have my commitment to all of you that that is where our office will be, uh not just yesterday, not just today, uh but obviously as long as it takes. I did an interview last night with a news station and um they tried to, I would say, probably stump me. They said, uh, do you have a timeline for the repair and recovery of everything that's going on here? And I said, I know better than to answer that. Uh I said, I'm not going to give you a timeline, but I will give you my commitment that no matter how long it takes, our office will be here and FEMA will be here to ensure that we do have the proper repair and recovery. And so I thought I I think you're starting to see not just that commitment, but actually the boots on the ground and, as I'm saying, the open hand from FEMA providing the resources that's necessary. Um let me just quickly run through. Obviously, you know the program's a public assistance program. That's something that obviously is going to benefit um the the county here in Monterey, the individual assistance program um that talks about the personal um recovery that people can have, anything from counseling to care for pets to unemployment insurance. And then a very important one, housing program, the housing program through FEMA uh for the insured and underinsured, dealing with rental rental assistance, repair, and reconstruction. And then obviously, S B A, the Small Business Administration, is playing an important part in the recovery, especially with these no interest loans, literally a no interest loan for one year uh which they can which they can provide, uh which is very beneficial. Uh and then dealing helping homeowners, there's uh litigation assistance. If you're dealing with an insurance company that can be very difficult, you can work with S B A to provide assistance for the necessary legal fees. And then, of course, the emergency um injury disaster loans are there too. There's also a nutrition aspect of that. If you need uh as the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program food stamps, uh you can get that through FEMA a month benefits. And then, of course, tax relief. We've seen that they've if you are in a county that's been infected uh and that has a disaster declaration, we've already got a one month uh delay to May fifteenth to filing your taxes. Uh and there's other exemptions that really that you can submit for disaster related losses. Uh and so there there's going to be a number of ways because of that disaster declaration that Monterey County and the impacted individuals and organizations and nonprofits uh that are actually helping out uh will actually be benefited through this declaration and through the uh power of the purse, as I call it, the power of the federal government's purse going forward. And like I said, and as you know, in working with my office, at least I hope that you know, and I hope that you have competence knowing that we will be here to help make that federal agency and the federal government work for all of us here in our home in Monterey County. Um in the hundred and eighteenth Congress going forward, obviously, uh this is a hell of a way to start it off, not just with this storm, but obviously taking fifteen votes to pick a speaker. So I cannot really give you a good sense of what the agenda is going to be in the hundred and eighteenth Congress. Obviously, we're going to hear a lot about some investigations and and some other interesting areas. Um but I do believe that obviously, you know, as I approach this job, obviously, my interests are going to be about the nineteenth congressional district. I cannot stress that enough, and obviously, that includes Monterey County. So the areas that I will continue to fight for is obviously protection of our environment, continue to work on immigration reform. I had a good conversation with Zoe Lofgren and Senator Padilla on the tarmac yesterday about how we're going to um approach the strategy of the Farm Workforce Modernization Act, an an immigration bill that affects us, that could affect us, have a great impact, a very positive impact on our farm workers, on our farmers, uh and on a farm worker housing here on the central coast. How we go about getting this to a vote on the House floor, how we go about working with the Senate and making sure that there are Republican senators who are willing to at least talk about this very, very beneficial bill when it comes to immigration reform. Uh so immigration reform, and then, of course, affordable housing. Continue to reintroduce the bills uh that I believe um will help us here uh in Monterey County in the nineteenth congressional district. Uh bills such as the first time home buyers tax credit, making sure that that fifteen thousand dollar tax credit is there at the federal level. Uh making sure that there's a middle income housing tax credit for workforce housing, which I think is important. I support light tax. I support low income housing tax credit. But we got to make sure that though there are housing for those who don't qualify for low income. They're making just too much. Our teachers, our police officers, our firefighters. Where, why can't they afford to not just work here? We want them to live here in our communities. And therefore, we want tax incentives for developers to have low, middle income housing uh built. Uh and then also um continuing to make sure that the um in regards to selling homes, I've introduced last year, I introduced uh last term, I introduced this bill called the More Homes on the Market Bill. Uh basically, I think we all know the types that there are mom and pops who have owned their homes since the seventies, eighties, nineties, even early two thousands. And they don't want to sell their homes right now. They've kind of grown out of their homes. They don't want to sell their homes right now because they know they will take a hit on their taxes. They'll have to pay a huge amount of taxes because of how the price increase in that house. And so what I've done is basically introduced a bill that increases the uh the cap on the capital gains. Right now, it's based on a nineteen ninety seven law that says you can only get up to two hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred thousand. Anything beyond that, you got to pay taxes on that. You know as well as I do that houses around here, if you sell them, if you've owned them that long, uh basically, you're going to make more than that, and you're going to get hit on that when it comes to taxes. And so we want to be able to give people that option to not only protect their nest egg and but also be able to sell their homes so we can put more homes on the market. That's the basis behind that bill as well. So environment, immigration, affordable housing, obviously big issue uh important issues to us here in the nineteenth congressional district and ones we're going to continue to focus on. But then also kind of bigger issues in looking at Congress, we got to deal with the debt ceiling. We're going to be sure to uh that we obviously raise that debt ceiling without cutting our social security or Medicare. Uh as you heard, uh appropriately so with the farm bill, we want to make sure that we reauthorize that. I do believe it's going to be done in a bipartisan basis. What you are going to see is some of the fights that I could see coming has to deal with some of the conservation efforts that we were able to put in the Inflation Reduction Act. Uh but also, and it's inevitable, you're always going to have a fight over SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which is seventy percent of the farm bill. If most, you don't know that, because most people don't know that. But that's going to be a big fight, but uh we'll deal with that accordingly, just like we did back in twenty eighteen. Uh I do believe we're going to have our fights over those areas, but we are going to be able to pass a farm bill. Uh and I think that's something to look forward to. And then obviously, getting a budget and getting a defense budget, which is important to our interests here in Monterey County. And then, of course, as we go forward in the hundred and eighteenth Congress, it's implementing everything we did in the hundred and seventeenth Congress. We did a lot in the hundred and seventeenth Congress with a very slim majority. We got a hell of a lot done, mainly with these bipartisan bills that I'm going to talk about, Democrats and Republicans passing these major investments in our infrastructure, in our manufacturing, and in basically our ability to reduce our carbon output. With the I I J A, um there, let me just get right into it. In regards to the Naciamento and San Antonio uh dams, we are fully behind the work that Supervisor Lopez has led on, uh what many of the supervisors are working on to ensure that we are to, the federal government plays its part in providing the resources necessary and working with you to apply for those grant programs through the I I J A so that we have the power of the purse of the federal government, especially. so that we have the power of the purse of the federal government, especially with the IIJA, and knowing that there is three billion in the IIJA that's allocated for dams, repair and reconstruction. And so look forward to working with you, Supervisor Lopez, on that. CHIPS and Science Act, obviously, as you know, Monterey County is included in the nineteenth congressional district, which includes South San Jose. So therefore, it's very important that with CHIPS and Science Act, you've heard a lot about the manufacturing of semiconductor chips. You can't really, you know, manufacturing plants in San Jose, that's going to be tough. However, people don't talk about the hundred and fifty billion that's there for innovation. And I think that's what we need to be focusing on for Silicon Valley and continuing to expand on that, on that innovation base that we have there. And then, of course, the Inflation Reduction Act, the largest investment in human history when it comes to reducing our carbon output. Making sure that people have access to those incentives to start pivoting to clean transportation and clean energy, making sure that basically people know and understand and can apply for those incentives going forward. A lot of good work here on these major bipartisan bills, and I hope people understand that they can come to my office if people want to know more about that and how we look forward to working with you in order to make sure that power of the purse and the power of the federal government is here working for you and for us here in Monterey County. With that, I yield back unless there's any questions.
Well, we're on a tight schedule, so I'll leave the comments for at the end of the meeting. Congressman, thank you very much for your presentation and your good leadership and work for Monterey County.
Thank you.
We're going to go next to Congressman Zoe Loughran, who I believe is on Zoom for us.
I am. Thank you so much, Supervisor, and to my colleague and friend, Jimmy Panetta, who's done such a wonderful job representing Monterey County for all these many years. I am just privileged to now join him in representing Monterey County. And although many of us were surprised by the redistricting commission, what we've ended up with is two representatives who are going to stand up for Monterey County, and Jimmy and I will be teaming up on all of the efforts that you are making to improve life for your citizens. First, let me just compliment the county staff. I was on the Board of Supervisors in Santa Clara County for quite some time, so I've heard a lot of staff reports. But your staff reports were on point, very understandable, and very helpful to me in focusing on what it is that the county needs help with. There, as Jimmy mentioned, we have accomplished a lot in the last Congress, the Inflation Reduction Act, the bipartisan infrastructure bill, the CHIPS and CHIPS. There is a lot of money that it needs to be overseen. And I think the job that Jimmy and I face with you is to identify resources that may be available, everything from clean water systems to broadband, to dams, to roads. There's a lot of opportunity, and we need to work with you to make sure that the resources come to meet your needs. On the disaster funding, as some of you know, I chair the California Democratic delegation. We meet constantly, and it gives us a leg up because if we need a letter signed from every single Democrat in the House in California, we wouldn't get that done in a hurry. And we've also had a good working relationship, not on some policy issues, not on choice issues and the like, but on disaster assistance with our Republican colleagues. So it was really great that we had every single House member, plus our two senators, on the letter asking for assistance. We are now working, and there's no guarantee we'll get this, but we're working to see if we can't get the federal government to do a hundred percent of the federal cost share for categories A and B, that's debris removal and emergency protective measures, as well as a ninety percent federal cost share for all the other categories of public assistance, that's C through G. Now, the formula that's established is adverse to California, as so many formulas are, because it has to do with per capita losses, and because California is so big, it's often hard to qualify. But we are going to pursue that with the governor's office as strong as we can. We know that the state has a shortfall this year, and counties, of course, are also feeling the pinch. So we're going to work on that. Just a word, because you mentioned it, and Jimmy did as well. The Farm Workforce Modernization Act was a bill I authored with Republican members and the help of Jimmy Panetta and salute Carver Hall and others. You know, it took us almost a year with the Republican and House members sat together, tremendous help from the United Farm Workers Union and the Western Growers and others to come up with a compromise that would be good for farm workers, but also good for growers. And we accomplished that, and I'm not going to say it's a perfect bill, but it's a good bill, and it would be better, everybody would be better off if we were able to pass it. We had a large bipartisan vote in the hundred and sixteenth Congress. It went to the Senate, nothing happened. We did it again in the last Congress, big bipartisan vote, it went to the Senate. And although Senator Bennett was trying to get a compromise with some of the Republican senators, in the end, all the Republican senators backed out. So in talking to some of, not only with Jimmy, but also some of the Republican members who worked so hard on this, we're thinking to reintroduce it again in the House in hopes that we can move it forward. One of the things that people are concerned about across the country is the increased cost of food. Well, a factor in the increased cost of food is the increased cost of labor. Mike Simpson, our Republican colleague from Idaho, who's done very good work on this bill, estimated it's going to increase cost to consumers seven hundred million dollars, because we didn't pass this last year. So we're going to do our best to get that done. On immigration reform, you know, I have chaired the Immigration Subcommittee. I used to teach immigration law, and I've tried for, lo, these many years, to get top-to-bottom reform. It has been one of the most frustrating legislative experiences of my lifetime because we cannot get, for the most part, Republicans in the House or Senate to help us. This should not be a partisan issue. And in fact, if you go to the voters in the United States, it is not a partisan issue. But it has become that in the House of Representatives. So I'm not overly optimistic, but I never give up. Just a final note, because Jimmy has covered so much of what I would have as well. With the farm bill, we also need to focus on the agriculture research and development aspects. We're working on a draft bill to expand the Department of Agriculture's role in supporting R and D for more sustainable agricultural tools and practices, as well as incentives and financial assistance for growers to purchase cleaner technologies and practices. Now, Jimmy has been on the Ag Committee, I have not, but I'm now the senior Democrat on the House Science Committee. And although we don't have complete jurisdiction over technology and science in the Ag area, I've talked to the chairman, incoming chairman of the Science Committee, Frank Lucas, who's a very decent guy and a former chair of the House Agricultural Committee. And he, he also comes from an agricultural area. And we both have an interest in seeing, at least in an oversight way, what might be done further to accelerate the use of science and technology in the Ag arena to increase production and enhance productivity. So I have a lot of other things I'm going to be doing. But one of the things I want to do more than anything else is work with you and stand up for you and your priorities. It's great to hear what my priorities are, and there are some things that, as a member of the Science Committee, I'll be working on the Fusion Energy Program and the Artificial Intelligence Program and the quantum computing issues that are not necessarily the focus of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. They're important for the country. But when it comes to you, I want to hear from you how I can help, and then Jimmy and I will do our best to make sure it happens. So thanks for visiting with me, and thank you to you and your staff for your excellent work.
Thank you, Congressman Zoe Loughran. We're very pleased to have the head of the California delegation also be representing Monterey County now. And you've been very attentive and accessible, just as Congressman Panetta has been to our needs and when we need to reach out to you. So thank you very much for joining us today. We're going to now go to our state senators and assembly members who are with us on Zoom. And then we will go to them first and then go to staff representing different offices. We'll go to first Senator John Laird, who's on Zoom with us as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and it's good to see you all. And I am zooming from Scotts Valley because I'm about to speak here, but I spent the morning visiting flooded-out neighborhoods and and the major slides that are closing Highway Nine. And, and we have talked about storms here, and I appreciated the chair mentioning that I'll be joining Assemblymember Addus all across the Monterey Peninsula and Big Sur this weekend. And I've been to all the sites along coastal Santa Cruz, and Assemblymember Addus and I did eight, she did ten. I did eight in San Luis Obispo last weekend, and Congressman Panetta was with us for three. And so just a tribute to the team that we have here, that we are operating as a team in trying to respond. And at the state level, there will be plenty of things. We will work with you. I heard it, but over the short term, it was our job to really jam the Office of Emergency Services and the governor to make sure that Monterey and San Luis Obispo were added to the declaration after the first initial one. And that was successful. And Congressman Panetta organized a town hall meeting in the Santa Cruz Mountains last night, and I attended, and there were over two hundred people there, along with FEMA, SBA, the county, PG&E, and others. And there's a whole world of hurt going on from people that have been out of their houses, don't have access to road, haven't had electricity in a long time. And there's a road back, and so I think we are trying to be equipped to deal with that in whatever way is possible at the local level and through the state. Last year was a busy year. I landed twenty bills on the governor's desk, chaired twenty-five climate meetings of senators. We had a fifteen-bill package that landed on the governor's desk and moved the governor's bills through. I chaired fifteen education hearings. We had the largest year-over-year increase in K through twelve education in modern times. And then the governor dropped Diablo Canyon out of the sky in the spring, and I negotiated that to the best effect for the central coast. I helped choose the new state auditor, and in my spare time, I was working for seven months to save the Watsonville Hospital, which transferred to the public district on the last day of August, and now we're working with them on the sustainability issues. Just this week, the Senate Rules Committee assigned the unrepresented voters in California to a Senate seat. There are three point six million residents of California that will have no senator for two years because the previous district expired and the new one doesn't take up for two years. And there's exactly three thousand one residents of the central coast in San Benito County and Monterey County, and they were assigned to Senator Caballero on Wednesday. So even though they are no longer in her district, for the next two years, her office will seek to represent them. And the real goal is, is it be somebody adjacent to the district and not somebody who will be running in the district in two years, so it doesn't give them an unfair leg up, which is the reason that assignment was made. For my own priorities this year, I'm going to continue to do a lot of the climate work, the education work, and a bunch of the local issues. But when I was last at the Monterey Board of Supervisors, Highway One was closed that day for eighteen hours. There was a problem at the battery storage plant in Moss Landing. And so right out the gate, the first bill that I have introduced is a bill that would create standards, fire and safety standards, and possibly notification for battery storage. Battery storage got us through those ten hot days in December. As a matter of fact, for a few key hours, they were providing one and a half times the electricity of Diablo Canyon. And so the grid didn't go down because of battery storage. But we should not expect people that live in the vicinity to feel unsafe and not have full transparency about what's going on. And so I introduced that bill out the gate, will amend the guts into it sometime in the next couple of months and hope to work with you so that it is in concert with what you want in that. You had a long list of things in the presentations, and I look forward to to working with you and all. But we had our budget oversight hearing this week. The governor presented his budget in the last week. And basically, depending on who you believe, there's between a twenty-one and twenty-four billion-dollar deficit, which is roughly ten percent of the general fund budget. And so his budget works hard not to do absolute cuts, but to try to trigger them into future years and to spread them out. As a result, it's going to be really hard to do new things. We will have to knock something out of the budget to do a new thing in the budget. And I think some of them are very important to us, and we don't want to retrench. Homelessness and programs for the unsheltered was in your presentation. We're going to be doing more oversight this year, and the Budget Committee in the Senate in February will have an oversight hearing on homeless programs. I visited as many as I could in the four counties this fall, and my conclusion is, is that everybody's doing what works for them locally, whether it's veterans' housing in the Santa Cruz Mountains, or small houses in Grover Beach, or the new shelter that's being constructed and in or developed in Monterey, or the one that's been in Seaside. And I visited the one in Salinas, even though it's not in my district. And we have to make sure the money matches what is working for people in the local community. So that is going to be one of the things that I really push for in our oversight hearing. Water infrastructure, I continue to work with you, and I did an op-ed a few months ago just before one of your water summits that laid out a strategy for the whole county and what we need to do, and I want to work on that. It's going to be hard on some of the money issues, but I get the needs, and we will try to see what we can do. And I think that, that, to be honest, the presentation on the veterans' home was a little optimistic in the sense that the email came from CalVet this week, and it was mentioned that they just do not support a veterans' home in Monterey. And at the time, when we have a deficit, and this would be tens of millions of dollars, a bill would be held in the appropriations of the money committees with the governor saying he's going to veto it at the end. And so I think the strategy, there's twenty-one thousand veterans in Monterey County who really carry emotional and physical trauma from the war and service and where there are big gaps in assisted living, memory care, and other services. And I think for the short term, because even if that was funded, it would take ten years, for the short term, we have to get services to them. Last year, I asked in the budget that they augment the budget for memory care and assisted living. I was unsuccessful, and even though there's a deficit, I'm going to try to do that this year. Because while there's a debate about doing a ten-year project, for me, we got to get the services right now on the ground where there are the waiting periods that were described in the presentation. So even though I'm sure that statement from CalVet was not greeted with much warmth in Monterey County, it's like, how are we going to maneuver within the reality of what they said in that statement? And I will work with you on however we do that. With that, this is, this has been like speed dating. So I will just work with you on the rest of your issues. And I want to make one last thing. I said on, on how in the storms, we are working together. We were all in Watsonville yesterday. We have been throughout the district, and I just want to salute. I think it has been a baptism by fire for Donna Addus coming in, and she has been everywhere. She's been in in a matter of weeks, and she has really done a lot. And it has been a great thing because it is really, to the extent she didn't, and she was very educated, it's helped acquaint her with the issues. And Jimmy did not represent the Santa Cruz Mountains. And Jimmy did not represent the Santa Cruz Mountains. Anna, as you had him, and here he's with 200 people last night. He's been at the slide in the flooded neighborhoods that I visited today. And this has been a great thing for the team that is the central coast. I think people have really responded and we never have to ask you to stay in touch, but we are ready to just continue the work to make sure, in my case, the state is carrying its weight on how we respond to these storms. So thank you for having me here today. If you get to the questions and comments and it's after three, I have to go, but I'm on until three. And thank you for allowing me to participate today.
Thank you, Senator Laird, we'll try to get through that to get some questions to everyone at the end. We're going to move quickly to who we were just talking to, our new Assembly Member, Donna Addis for Monterey County. So we'll go to you next and then we'll go to federal and state staff on Zoom with us.
Well, thank you and good afternoon. I was going to say it's been trial by flood rather than trial by fire. And very much appreciate the compliments from State Senator Laird. And, and thank you Chairman Alejo and supervisors, county staff for giving us this opportunity today. It's really my honor to be with you in this new role as your Assembly Member, representing about 200 miles of coastline from the Santa Cruz Harbor to the Santa Barbara County line. And my district basically is nested inside both State Senator John Laird's district as well as Congressman Panetta's district and then overlaps to the south with Congressman Carbajal. And really, if I was going to go through a disaster, I cannot think of better people to go through one with than the county staff of Monterey, who, over the course of this meeting, I've seen how much work you've done, but also over the last couple of weeks. The first responders, I also want to say a very deep thank you to. We were with some of them yesterday when we were with President Biden and got to hear some of their stories. And supervisors and local electeds, I served on city council during COVID. So I know some of what you're going through as supervisors with having another disaster on your hand right after what we went through. And I want to say thank you for your work. And then really echo what State Senator Laird said, that it has been really amazing to have the partnership of the Senator as well as Assembly Member Rivas and our congressional representatives, Congressman Panetta, Congressman Lofgren, Congressman Carbajal, who have stepped up very, very swiftly and answered all of my phone calls and texts when I've reached out to say, we need to get things moving. And I want to say thank you also to my staff, who is small but mighty, having a new office. We have a small staff, but lots of phone calls coming in around this disaster. And so they've been working night and day to assess, to respond and to collaborate with our partners across the state. And this includes, as Senator Laird said, advocating for that major disaster declaration. Coordinating, as I mentioned, I've visited 14 places already, some with Governor Newsom, some with each of the congressmen, some with the Senator, and then we're heading to Monterey County on Sunday to see a few more places. So, and Supervisor Alejo, I want to recognize what you said about not just focusing on the coastal areas, but seeing all of Monterey County. And so our door is open when some of that gets arranged. Then I ask that you please reach out to our office with those invites as well, because that's important to us to be serving the whole county as partners with all of the other representatives. And you know, then I'll also highlight, as Senator Laird did, you know, working with CalOES, working with PG&E. I went and visited base camp up in Santa Cruz for PG&E and have been in constant contact with them about making sure the lights are on, talking with the American Red Cross about housing and making sure. And yesterday, when I was in conversation with local electeds, housing was a top priority for me to make sure. And it sounds like that's going okay for most people in your area in Monterey County. And then, you know, focusing on basic emergency services and over the next, you know, few weeks into the coming months, looking at recovery, what our role is and where we need to push to make sure that the recovery happens just as, as quickly as it possibly can. And that we're a strong voice in that for the needs of people in Monterey County. I'll just mention the Governor's budget very briefly. We all know that it's bad news, but we will be fighting for that flood, flood prevention money to stay in. There's $135 million that you heard Assembly Member Rivas talk about. And we want to keep that in there and make sure that we do everything we can so that we learn from the challenges of this flood. Right now, we think of it as a historic flood, but I would be very much aligned with what Senator Laird has been saying, which is we have to address climate change. Because of our climate, we're going to see more and more of these floods. And so we want to be an active participant in that. And then Supervisor Alejo, I know that you wanted to hear what my priorities are. So I'll just lay out sort of the top four or five things that we've got legislation coming forward in. And you know, we're still in formation on our budget or on our legislative package. So there will be a couple of other things. But we do want to address disaster mitigation and how we approach emergency housing. So we'll be proposing a tax credit for motels and other commercially licensed folks who offer shelter to the unhoused during state of emergencies. We do want to work in the veteran and military affairs space. And I appreciate Jack who mentioned that I am on the Committee for Military and Veteran Affairs. And we've had those same interactions with CalVet. And one of my biggest concerns has been putting something forward that closes a door long term or gets this position entrenched. And so we're working from a different angle with military defense infrastructure so that some of those federal funds can be accessed as matching funds. It's not exactly what you've been going after with veterans affairs. And I agree with Senator Laird that we need to be working on those immediate services for memory care and aging veterans and would want to be a partner in that. So what I'm proposing is a little bit different, but still will allow Monterey County to access some matching funds. We're also working in the area of coastal protections. And as I mentioned, I've got 200 miles of coastline that I serve. We've got an offshore wind community benefits bill. And really what this focus is on is we know that we need to address the climate crisis. We know that offshore wind is incredibly important in that. And local communities need to benefit. And when I say local communities, I'm really talking about coastal and marine communities. I'm talking about the nonprofits that serve them. I'm talking about city and county governments that may be faced with some infrastructure decisions and how they benefit. And I'm talking about tribes who, you know, from the water and from the land may see the effects of offshore wind. We're also working with the Monterey Bay Aquarium and other organizations to move forward kelp bed protections. I would say the Monterey Bay has been a leader in understanding the role of kelp, understanding how important it is. And then pushing forward how we're going to protect these kelp beds in the face of climate change and a changing ocean environment. So we're very excited about that. I'm also on the Committee for Higher Education, which I asked for because this Assembly District, I believe, is the only one that has two CSU campuses. We've got the Jewel CSUMB and then Cal Poly, that's well established. So we're looking at some parental leave protections for CSU staff. We're looking at some other things in education as well, not pertaining to higher education. So working on the state seal of biliteracy, as well as in the area of children. This isn't education, but in the area of supporting children, eliminating the statute of limitations in civil cases for child sexual abuse. So we have some heavy lifts in that area, but we're ready for the challenge that's going to come. And then finally, I'll just mention housing because it's critical. And I know that there's a critical housing shortage on the peninsula. Two things that we've got is one, working with community college housing to make it easier for community colleges to build housing. And then making permanent some mobile home residency law protections that allow mobile home residents to organize and bring their complaints forward. And I think this is critically important because often our mobile home parks are our most affordable housing across this Assembly District. So I would agree, this has been like speed dating, but incredibly informative for me. And so I really want to say thank you. I'm at home today, zooming from home. I was up in Watsonville yesterday with Supervisor Alejo and some others and, and President Biden. And then tomorrow we'll be doing the Women's March and then Sunday we'll be headed back to Monterey and up to Sacramento on Monday. So I also want to echo what Congressman Lofgren said, that really my purpose for being here is to serve you, to hear your voice. I want to encourage you to reach out to our office, you already have, but encourage you to keep doing that. My district director is Andrea Chmelik, that you've all interacted with already. And then Julie Cravato is my legislative director. Both are in the audience listening to this call today. So encourage you to keep reaching out to us and stay in contact and let us know what your needs are. And with that Supervisor Alejo, Chair Alejo, I'll say thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Assembly Member Addis. And we look forward to working very closely with you and also thank John Laird for being a big champion for, for us as also. We're going to now move quickly to our, our federal offices. And we have staff representatives and we hope they could keep it brief to about three minutes because we are running behind. We're going to start with Senator Diane Feinstein's office, Zach Vaden, who is with us, I believe, on Zoom as well.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start off by saying, you know, the Senator's, you know, with you with the recovery efforts from the recent storms. Congressman Panetta did a good, you know, did a very good job on going through the relief efforts that are underway. And I just wanted to add that our staff has a very good and dedicated constituent services team. So if you know, if you find that you have people coming to you looking for assistance with the federal government, you know, please do come our way and we can have someone work on their cases here. So very, so again, I'll do this as briefly as possible. So the Senator was very proud of the omnibus package that passed at the end of last year, which was a huge win for California, particularly in Monterey County with the congressionally directed spending requests that went through with her position on the Appropriations Committee with money for the Family Justice Center, for the Monterey Salinas Transit District, for the Rapid Transit Corridor, money for the Monterey County Water Resources Agency for the Castroville Seawater Intrusion Project and others. We can expect going forward, we, we aren't expecting any major changes to the congressionally directed spending process this year. You can expect to see our application come out sometime in March. So, and we'll be asking and, and you know, barring any sort of major unexpected changes, it'll be sort of by the end of March will be our deadline for submitting new projects. The Senator was also very happy about including the large amounts for homelessness spending and that omnibus package, a lot of which is will be coming to California. I was, you know, interested earlier to hear, you know, about how Monterey County is having difficulties with being somewhat successful in fighting homelessness, but then, you know, losing funding as a result of that. So that's certainly something that I will be interested in discussing further. Also, a couple of bills the Senator was happy to have passed that she had authored were the Respect for Marriage Act, which repealed the Defense of Marriage Act, which was a big success. And the Violence Against Women Act reauthorization, bringing a lot of money back into those projects. Going forward, you know, the Senator's priorities remain largely the same. You know, generally, the top line issue is wildfire and water issues. So looking for more funding sources for fighting fires or fighting drought, for supporting those that do so, followed by homelessness, homelessness. We've got another bill being introduced, day one, that would, that would create another billion dollars in grant programs for local communities to fight homelessness as long, as well as another day one act, which she will be reintroducing would be the West Coast Ocean Protection Act, prohibiting offshore drilling on federal lands. You know, I'll just do, as you had mentioned, I'll do my, I was doing my best to keep the staff section short. So I'll stick around for questions after and we'll let you move on.
Appreciate it, Zach. Thank you very much for joining us. And we always recognize here in Monterey County that staff are important because they do a lot of the follow up work and they're the ones who are often in touch with our staff most of the time. So we want to go next to Senator Alex Padilla's office, who he was, he joined us in Watsonville yesterday as well. We'll go to Margaret Arachiga. And if she is not online, then we will jump to State Senator Ana Caballero's staff, Vanessa Gonzalez. And then we'll try Margaret after that.
Good afternoon, Chair Alejo Supervisor. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide legislative updates on behalf of Senator Caballero. So unfortunately, she couldn't be here today. She had a previous commitment that she had to attend to. But I will be happy to share some of focus, some of her focus on her 2023 legislative bills that she's introduced so far. And before I get there, I just want to share, as Senator Laird mentioned, that as of January 18th, which was a couple of days ago, the Senate Rules Committee adopted what it calls a deferred area assignments, areas of the state that do not have a district until after the 2024 general election to adjacent members. And in this case, Senator Caballero will continue to represent Salinas Valley and San Benito County in order to provide constituent services and represent the area, which means that we'll represent now over a million constituents. You know, we're excited for that and we will continue to be here in the Salinas office. I want to also thank the county for your excellent job in responding to the storms, collaborating with the legislators across the board and helping leverage resources. We will continue to be available for, to support in the recovery as well. And some of the committees at the center it will be sitting on this year include banking and financial institutions, budget and fiscal review, energy utilities and communications, housing, judiciary. And she'll be the Chair for the Governance and Finance Committee once more. Some of the bills that she has already introduced, which was today and yesterday, I'll go ahead and just give a brief summary about the bills. The first one is SB 20, SB 225, which is Community Anti-Displacement and Preservation Program. This bill creates a new program called the Community Anti-Displacement and Preservation Program. It'll be, the acronym will be CAPP, so TAP, to assist with the acquisition and rehabilitation of existing unsubsidized housing and converting it to long-term affordable housing, which will provide immediate relief to low-income families. The program will finance acquisition of existing housing in order to preserve its affordability for low-income residents and prevent displacement and homelessness by stabilizing low-income families and their communities, while also investing in the supply of affordable homes for the future. And then we have SB 17, which is Senior Housing Production. This bill will revise the requirements under the Low Income Housing Tax Credit to ensure that a minimum percentage of the credits are allocated for senior housing projects. And then we have SB 23, which is Water Supply and Flood Risk Reduction Permitting. This bill creates a four-pronged pathway for permit, permit streamlining for water supply and flood risk reduction projects. And then finally, we have SB 37, which is Senior and Disabled Persons Rent Subsidy Program. This bill will ensure seniors and people with disabilities remain housed by providing a shallow subsidy to assist with rent payments and tenants as tenants fall behind. So as you know, some of her pillars for Senator Caballero, you know, she's been in Monterey County throughout her career. But she, some of the main issue areas that she'll continue to push for is affordable housing, access to healthcare, public safety, economic development, utilities and environmental quality. And I want to emphasize our office will continue to work together with Monterey County. Our staff, myself and Marissa, Anna Velasquez as well here in the Salinas office, are always open to connect with, you know, with elected officials and also your staff to support in any efforts and will continue to disseminate grant information as well through emails as we have done in the past. So unless there are any questions, that would be my end of report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. And if you could please extend our thanks to Senator Caballero. And we look forward to continued representation of the Salinas Valley. We're going to go back to Margaret Arachiga again. If she is on, we will jump to her.
Supervisor Alejo.
Yes.
I believe Jamie Bernal is on the attendees list and he's representing Senator Padilla's office.
Okay, perfect. Jamie, welcome.
Hi, yes, thank you everyone. Thank you, Honorable Chair. I'm here representing Senator Padilla's office. My name is Jamie Bernal. Excuse the, the poor lighting also, by the way. It is very great getting to join the meeting. As you know, the Senator was just visiting and touring a lot of the areas that were damaged with the President. One thing I did want to extend is that our office, if our office can help possible, to please let, let everyone know, let your constituents know, they can always They can always reach out to our office. Our office has the contact information on our website, padilla.senate.gov, where you can directly reach out to any of our offices or submit your casework there. We'd be glad to assist in any ways possible. As many of you guys know, many of you have gotten the chance to work with Margaret Arachiga before, and so I'm also here and would be glad to assist any of you guys. And I can even give my contact information to staff after the meeting. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate you joining us representing the senator. Last but not least, I wanted to just give a chance for Jose Verduzco, who is our central California representative for the Governor Gavin Newsom's office. If he wants to introduce himself or make some brief comments. Also, Abigail Solis is one who has been in touch with us as well from that same office. Seen, he might have jumped off. Okay, with that, then we will close those comments. Thank you, everyone, for your presentations. We're not going to go to comments from my colleagues and then we're going to give some time for the public to make any comments on the presentations that were done today. I'm going to start first with, just go down district order and then I'll go last. We'll start with District Two. Make some brief comments, please.
I want to thank everybody from our elected officials and their comments and their support for our priorities here. I know we're running behind, so I'm going to try to keep things a little bit brief here. But I want to point, you know, good to hear about the $3 billion that would be available for federal funds for for the work down at the dams, which are really essential. I'm sure Supervisor Lopez will have things to say about that, but I am, of course, very supportive of anything there. And I think when we look at the whole issue of flood control, we also need to look at at ways to retain that water. And of course, that is where an importance of having these dams and also the river maintenance and to take into effect there. But I also want to address the whole issue of climate change and the way we're dealing with that, which has been ongoing and will continue to be ongoing as we look at different green industries, new technologies coming in, reducing emissions, utilizing clean energy. But an important part of that, too, I think we need to really look at is wildfires. And when we have wildfires and we're burning hundreds of thousands of acres, there is immeasurable amounts of carbon getting into the atmosphere. And this is, you know, this is something we need to take a take a hard look at and doing prevention. And in, we are, I know, putting a lot of money into, and you know, the state, I believe, has $2.7 billion is putting aside this year for wildfire prevention. So there's been a lot of a lot of efforts there and there'll be a lot of efforts ongoing, but those are all funds and all programs that we need to to utilize as much as possible into our areas here because we are a very large county with a lot of a lot of susceptible fires. And this is one way to deal with climate change, plus protect our lives, our environment and our properties.
Thank you. We'll go to next district, Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to thank all of our legislators who brought us great information about what their priorities are for the coming year and shared the opportunity, gave us the opportunity to share our own. I think moving forward, one of the only things that for me will be a priority this year is as Supervisor Church mentioned, is maintenance of the river. As we recognize the impacts of global warming, it means that these atmospheric rivers we're experiencing are more frequent and more powerful. As part of that, we have to recognize that the main channel of the Salinas River is no longer what it used to be, the small narrow bend that we've been allowed to work in, in order to keep clean and allow for fish passage as well. With that recognition, I think it's time that we'll be allowed to do a little more work in this river so that we don't have the severe impacts that we experienced like in the last system. So as we move forward, I look forward to continuing to collaborate, communicate, and hopefully produce some results for our communities who are continuing to reel from the damages. But I have to say thank you first for all of the work that's gone in from our legislators on the federal level down to the local level in terms of responding to these storms and their impacts on our community. And as was repeatedly said, it's not something that we're going to be done with quickly. We're going to continue to feel these impacts reverberate throughout local industry, which will impact local workforce and families at the end of the day. So I appreciate their offer that the door remains open until we are recovered, whether that be a month, six months, a year, or two years or beyond. It's truly a partnership that gets our communities to the place that they deserve to be. And so I want to thank you all for your commitment. And as we look forward to the coming year, I know that there still remains a lot of challenges ahead of us and look forward to navigating those critical waters together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Lopez. We'll go to District Four Supervisor Askew.
Thank you. I think my takeaway message for today is just to say thank you. I feel so great about the relationship that our legislative leaders at both the state and federal level, the way that they our legislators and their teams work so closely and so in coordination with Monterey County. I just want to say thank you. We had a chance to share a couple of our highlights in terms of priorities today, but we do have an incredibly active legislative program here in Monterey County. And I would encourage you to take a closer dive into our legislative program. We look forward to working with you to help you achieve your goals because I do believe that we have shared commitment to all of our residents here. In addition to some of the things that were talked about today, we each have district-specific priorities. And I know I've had some fairly extensive conversations with each one of our legislators representing District Four. I look forward to working with you on those issues as well as other priorities around continuing to expand healthcare to all of our residents, ensuring that our social services are funded adequately so that we have that the needs of our residents are being met and that we are collectively continuing to pursue absolutely every path available to increase the supply of affordable housing for our workforce and our unhoused residents. So thank you very much for joining us today and we look forward to continuing our work together.
Thank you. We'll go to Supervisor Adams, District Five.
Thank you so much. You know, whether it's at the federal, the state or the local level, whether you're a staff or elected, I think that our chosen path of work is very hard. And I so appreciate how we've all come together and worked so well during these recent disasters. I think it speaks highly of of our commitment to really making life better for people in our areas. I want to thank the staff, particularly the legislative staff, Annette and Nick and their teams. They've just done a great job of pulling this very complex series of schedules as well as issues together. And I thank you all so much for that. Top of mind for me are the residents and the businesses that have been impacted by the natural disasters in the last couple of weeks and indeed in our district in recent years. The FEMA financial support to deal with the damages from storms like we just went through is really critical to our ability at the local level to help our county and our residents recover. This includes the recovery support for our hospitality industry and the small businesses that suffered economic losses during and after these disasters. The direct impact on hospitality employees and lost wages is really critical. So FEMA Hazard Mitigation Funding is also important for us to help become more resilient and able to withstand the extreme events that all of us have acknowledged moving into the future. Pending funding that we have for the Cardinal River Free Project through FEMA is really an important. Secondly, I'd like to highlight the importance of addressing the homeless funding formulas. This was referenced by Roxanne Wilson, our staff on homelessness and housing. We've been successful at reducing the population of people experiencing homelessness and being unhoused, and we should not be punished for our success. I think that we need as much funding to prevent additional residents at risk from losing their homes by maintaining strong programs and consistent funding from the state and the federal levels. This is a top priority for me. It's critically as well important to secure state and federal funding to support the dam safety and maintaining our existing Nacimiento and San Antonio reservoirs. We have urgent and time-sensitive requirements to make that are needed to make those needed repairs. And we need to have state and federal support to make this happen. I think you've all acknowledged that. Lastly, I encourage your support in securing funding for the Marina Health Clinic and the San Lucas Water Supplies. And a county like ours, it is really unconscionable that we should have to have residents who are unable to have fresh and potable water. I hope that we can continue to work together on immigration reform and the Farm Bill reauthorization to support our vital agricultural industry. So thank you so much for your time and your thoughtful consideration of the needs of Monterey County today and every day. It's really appreciated. Thanks so much for being with us.
Thank you very much. I would just echo some of the statements of my colleagues. First of all, I want to really thank our state legislators for really stepping up, in particular Senator Laird, but I know he was also helped by our rest of our delegation just in saving that Watsonville Community Hospital. That was a record time to get a bill through in a matter of a couple of weeks and then a record time to raise over $60 million, of which the state really put a big chunk of that forward. And it's only operating today because of those heroic efforts. And on the Paharo River, it was a miracle with these storms that we didn't have a major disaster, a major mass flooding of that community because of a lot of the good work done by our crews that were working and trying to reinforce those levees. But the good thing is, is that we have a new flood agency. We now are eligible to draw down anywhere from $400 to $500 million. But also the good work between Senator Laird and Congress Member Panetta, but we know that work's going to continue. But the money is certainly going to be there for us to put into, put to good use. I would just mention the three things. Obviously, the storm taught us that had we had that interlake tunnel project at that point where Lake Nacimiento reached 76, our staff was worried because they said if more rain comes and it fills, releasing water at the very last minute would be more disastrous as the water went downstream than doing a slow release earlier, early on. But had we had that pipeline, we would be able to transfer that water. The Nacimiento reached 89%, but had we had that pipeline, we would be able to transfer that water over to Lake San Antonio. So that certainly seems to be one of those common sense projects that for the future of better flood protection and the future of storing more water when we have these major storms, it seems something that I hope we could realize. But I know that maintenance of the reservoir is step one before we could actually talk about expanding the capacity of those two existing reservoirs. On just on the homelessness front, I think Roxanne put it well. Monterey County is getting punished for doing what we should be doing, and that is making progress on homelessness. In the last two points in time counts, we had a reduction first of 20%. The last one was a reduction of 15%. But now, as a result of the formula being based on that count, we are now losing a couple of million dollars less money to do the good work that we've been doing in collaboration with other cities, with other nonprofits and with other agencies. So I hope that that could be a bill idea that is also common sense, that could help keep us whole and not have us continue to be punished for doing what our community and the governor and the legislature have asked us to do at the local level. Lastly, last thing would be just on the veterans home because I know it's something so dear, not only to me. My father, who was a veteran who just passed away a couple of years ago, but to a lot of our veterans that we talked to and our veterans and military affairs commissioners, they know there's a need here for veterans home to help our aging veterans. And we know that nobody's going to fight for us, nobody's going to argue for us in Sacramento unless we do it ourselves. The VA in Washington said that California is prioritized because they recognize there's a big need for more of these beds and places for aging veterans. And I get what we're saying. I know Calvet staff has pushed back on this proposal, but I know that unless we push, we're never going to get anywhere. And being in Sacramento before, I know when I did the minimum wage bill, it took three years to get that through and first two years got killed in appropriations committee, but we finally got it signed by law. The driver's license bill took 20 years and finally the governor in 2013 signed that bill so that undocumented immigrants could get a driver's license. The ethnic studies bill took 19 years. And so that's all I'm asking is sometimes just pushing helps educate the legislature, educates the governor, and furthers the conversation, whether it gets through the first year or not. Persistence will pay off. And I know that eventually we were going to get that, that a veterans home in Monterey County. All we're asking is our legislatures to hopefully introduce a bill so we have a serious conversation and we keep pushing year after year until we get it signed into law. The state puts up 35%. Once that happens, then the VA Department of Veterans Affairs puts up the other 65%. So it seems that would be a big win for California in light that we haven't had a new veterans home legislation in 20 years last year. Those are my comments. This is the time for questions and answers. So I just want to, before more of our legislators depart, I want to ask if there's any questions that we may have for any of our legislators from my colleagues at this time. See none? We will go to any comments from the public. I know some members of the public have been waiting here patiently. So we want to give a couple of minutes on the timer for each member of the public to comment on our presentations today. Thank you, sir. I will turn it, is mic on?
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Bunne. It's obvious from the last couple of weeks that our flood resilience capacity in the county is not where it should be. And one of the keys, as has already been mentioned, is the river. Currently, I'm the president of the River Management Association. So we're a group of farmers and landowners. And in conjunction with the Resource Conservation District, we oversee the annual maintenance that's done on the river. And we have permits for it. We have a permit, three permits, one from CDFW Fish and Wildlife, one from Army Corps of Engineers, and then the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The problem is the permits are very, very restrictive in what we can do. We really can't do a lot. We'd like to do more and we fund this ourselves, but the permits are tying our hands. And we did work in the river this year, but as you can see, it wasn't enough. So we would really ask, one very practical thing is if we can somehow get those permits altered. We don't have the power to do it. It's going to take you guys in conjunction with the senators and the assembly members to do that. But if we could do that together, that would be a very practical step to making us more resilient as a valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bunne, for your comments and staying with us this whole time. Go to the next public member.
Hi, good afternoon. Christina Watson, Transportation Agency for Monterey County. I just want to extend our deep gratitude to Representative Panetta for getting a million dollars for the US 101 South of Salinas Auxiliary Lane Project. Just want to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go to our next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mark Gonzalez. I'm Director on the Water Resource Agency of Monterey County. I'm going to thank everybody for all the work you're doing. Persistence is Monterey County's good aspect and it benefits us. The Interlake Tunnel Spillway Modification ERR is out today. And want to hit a little bit on the selfish side. California pays almost $235 billion a year in federal taxes. So if we can get about $300 million of that back, I think that would be kind of nice. And I hopefully the IIJA funding the three and a half billion that's in there, you know, 300 million would be nice if we could get some of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Anyone else? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, we have two hands raised.
Thank you.
One with the number ending in 902.
Good afternoon. My name is Nina Beatty. A number of issues that are discussed partially, fire dangers. The state has been ignoring the obvious fire danger on every building, which are the smart meters with lithium ion batteries that have caused fires and they're not grounded. We, the battery storage facility is a real fire danger. We've already had Highway One shut down. That was not sufficiently investigated. And we've got home battery storage that the state is pushing, which is not a safe option for the high fire hazard areas. Our stressed forests, state and federal agencies are conducting practices that are not scientific and dry out forests. And the trees create part of the rainfall that we're dependent on. And this is just unsound. The state is also and the federal government has been ignoring the Fukushima impacts on our ocean, on our kelp forest, as well as ocean sonar from institutions like Mabari that are stressing the kelp forests and eliminating and causing health problems for marine animals. The nuclear power was not discussed today. We have, we've been abandoned essentially. Santa Susana Field Laboratory, Humboldt Bay, up in, up in Eureka area, the cancer clusters in areas around nuclear plants, San Onofre and Diablo Canyon that is so unsafe and embritled. This is no option for the future. The aerospace industry, NASA, Space Force, SpaceX, they're, the impacts they're doing to the ozone layer in terms of destroying ozone and causing temperature rise and affecting the climate is not being addressed. You can bail all you want, but if you don't plug the holes, the result is going to be a sunken ship. And that's where we're at right now. Aerospace has a major impact. I don't hear anyone talking about the toxicity from broadband, wireless broadband, especially to children. And the state is pushing more. These legislators are pushing more. We have military costs to this area with a poison, that a poison, the water, the drinking water in this area and the ocean. We have military costs to this area with a poison, that have poisoned the water, the drinking water in this area and the ocean.
Thank you, Nina. Thank you. Thank you for your time and your public comments. I appreciate that. We'll go to our next online speaker.
Mary Kay Desmond.
Hi, yes, this is Mary Kay Desmond with the Salinas Basin Water Alliance. We've been grateful for all the work so many of the legislative staff and legislators, both at the county and the state and federal levels have done, helping move the needle forward on the dam safety repairs. You know, from flood, from flood mitigation, drought mitigation, just restoring our infrastructure. The last few weeks have underscored how vital it is to have these state and federal partnerships. We absolutely cannot do it alone. And as we're looking at trying to balance our groundwater, as we're combating seawater intrusion that threatens municipal drinking water as agricultural production, we really ask for your help in creative solutions for finding funding. We are, we are a group of 35 growers, 80,000 acres in the Salinas Valley. We're ready to work together to help bring whatever we can, letters, firepower, advocacy. We really need the Board of Supervisors' oversight and help pushing these, these repairs, both dam safety repairs and also other shovel-ready projects to make sure that we are using our infrastructure to maximize flood risk mitigation. More than ever, I think we've seen how desperately we need that, and we need this unity to continue fighting for those, those projects and funding. Thank you very much for all you're doing. We really appreciate it. We see how much work it takes behind the scenes, and we're behind you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else online? Anyone else in chambers? Okay, well, just let me close public comments, and then we'll go back to our, let me, let me take first. I know Congressmember Zoe Loughran raised her hand, so I want to go to her first. She wanted to, I think, make, make a response to what she heard.
Yes, thank you so much. I neglected to touch on the whole package of bills dealing with fire emergencies in California. We, the jurisdiction has been split between the Resources Committee and the Science Committee. We have a whole set of bills applying science and technology for actually detecting and fighting fire wildfires. That's very important. It has bipartisan support. Senator Padilla had a bill, the Fire Act, which actually got passed and signed by the president to pre-position FEMA resources and to do some other enhancements to recover. But the other issue is to reduce the fuel capacity and the like. So I didn't want to suggest that we were ignoring this. I have high hopes that we'll finish what, what was left in the Senate undone last year because there is bipartisan support, especially in California where every one of us, no matter our party affiliation, has had our constituents suffer from fire disasters. So thank you for raising it, Supervisor, both several of you. It's very important and something I hope we can accomplish.
Thank you, Congressmember, and it seems like more of us in local government are dealing, all over the state are dealing more with extremities, extreme, from extreme fires to extreme flooding. And so I, this will continue to be on our top priorities moving forward. We'll go to Supervisor Lopez for closing comments, and then we'll wrap up.
Sure. So my, my last comment is just to remind everybody that we're in the middle of our rain season. It would be, if it stopped now, it would have been a great rain year, but it's not over. So as we look at the potential for what is yet to come, there's still a lot threatening our communities. And so, again, we appreciate everybody's help to this point, but the conversations around where we are, it only came to mind because earlier today, The New York Times published, how does this year stack up versus others? And we were only about halfway up, and the reason we're only halfway up because we're halfway through the year. And so, again, with three months left, we all remember Miracle March. And at this point, I don't think we'd be calling that a miracle. But just a reminder that we're, we're still in the middle of this, and I once again want to thank everybody who had a part in keeping our community safe. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you. Any other colleagues for closing comments? See none? Lastly, I just want to thank Annette Di Addamo, Nick Chulos, and Ashley Walker, our state lobbyist, and Brent Heberly, our federal lobbyist, for helping put today's agenda together and all our department heads who presented. Thank you very much. We thank you, all our legislators and legislative staff for joining us. We look forward now to doing the work this year and getting a lot of work done, and then hopefully having a similar meeting a year from now, and hopefully be able to show the community the progress that we've made in partnership and in collaboration. With that, we will close today's meeting, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.